All right, you're in the meeting. We'll move right now.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
This is Wiley. Mr. Craddy.
Someone's definitely here.
Mr. Craddy.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bittman.
Here.
Mr. Togliano.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
With that, we have six present. We will move on to the pledge of allegiance and I think we're bringing in the high five letters. Ready? Ms. Barr, who do we have?
Good evening, board. These are our March Humpy High Five letters. They're going to lead us to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and now I'm going to have the high five letters to come up and introduce the votes to you right away.
My name is Nella. My fourth test at elementary and I'm fifth grade.
And Nella, here's what your teacher said about you when she nominated you. Nella is a hard-working, amazing helper and a friend to both her classmates and teachers, always bringing a positive attitude each and every day. Way to go, Nella.
My name is Gavin and I'm in the elementary school and I'm in second grade.
And Gavin, here's what your teacher said when she wrote your nomination. Gavin is an exemplar second grader. He comes to school each and every day eager to learn and engage with his teachers and classmates. He's always willing to participate and he is not afraid to take a risk in learning. Gavin gives his class family his best version of himself every day. He demonstrates what it means to be a great friend. I always see him being kind and giving compliments to his classmates. I'll be the first one to say, "Great job." I admire Gavin's positive attitude and how he shines bright each and every day at school. Way to go, Gavin.
I'm Brody and I'm in fifth grade from Martin Elementary.
And Brody, you are also nominated by your teacher and this is what she had to say. Brody demonstrates outstanding leadership through his patience, kindness, and flexibility in the classroom. His hard work and dedication to learning are truly admirable. His classmates enjoy working with him because he's supportive and encouraging. He consistently shows respect both to his peers and teachers, creating a positive and inclusive environment. Brody's perseverance and willingness to help others makes him a role model to those around him. As one student put it, "Brody brings out the best in you." Congratulations, Brody. We're proud to have you here at Martin.
My name is Ainsley. I'm in elementary.
And Ainsley, you are also nominated by your teacher and this is what she had to say. I'm thrilled to nominate Ainsley for a Shooting Star Award, which then qualify due for the High Five Award here. Ainsley is a shining example of kindness and inclusivity. She is always willing to help her classmates, making sure that everyone feels included and valued. Her respectful attitude and hard-working nature make her a role model in our classroom. Ainsley approaches every challenge with determination and a positive attitude. She is a wonderful friend to all. Her kindness, intelligence, and willingness to help others truly make her a star. Way to go.
I'm Joella from Marlboro Middle School.
Joella, and here's what your nominator had to say. Joella is a respectful student who always listens attentively and treats her peers and teachers with kindness. She takes responsibility for her learning, consistently completes assignments on time, and seeks help as needed. She contributes her ideas and supports her classmates every day. Way to go, Joella.
My name is Brandon.
And Bryn, you had multiple teachers, so it says, "From Bryn's teachers." All right. Brylair exemplifies the Raider way by regularly demonstrating respect, responsibility, and involvement. She consistently comes to class prepared, engaged, and ready to learn. Bryn treats both her teachers and peers with kindness and respect. Her involvement extends beyond just participation. She collaborates effectively, stays focused, and constantly performs at the top of her class on all of her assessments. Recently during a freshman advisory trivia game, Bryn revealed herself to be an absolute hidden asset, quietly and correctly providing most of the answers for the game. There was no shouting or boasting, just clear confidence and competence. She's a role model student who embodies the principles of PBIS in every way at HHS. Congratulations. We have a certificate up here, so in just a minute you guys can come on up here and we'll give that to you and then we'll take a picture. And parents, you can join in on the picture, but before they come up, thank you for sharing your wonderful students with us each and every day. We heard some very common things by all of you that were standing here and we are proud to have you part of our Huntley 158 family.
And parents, you can come up if you want. Don't be bashful.
Okay, looking good. All right, guys. One, two, three. Hey there. Is the parent up there?
All right, next we have some student recognition. I think there's a... Who do we have first here? Is it the chess team?
Yeah, the Marlboro Middle School chess team. Go and invite them in.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacob Howardson. I have the privilege of being the chess coach at Marlboro Middle School. Today I wanted to take a moment to recognize two outstanding members of our chess team, Jackson and Amir. This past weekend, they competed at the state tournament facing off against some of the toughest players in the state. Through their skill, strategy, and dedication, they won six out of their eight matches, both earning an impressive bronze medal. Jackson and Amir have put in countless hours of practice, constantly challenging themselves to improve, and their hard work has truly paid off. Their achievement is a testament to their determination and love for the game. Let's all give them a big round of applause. Congratulations, Jackson and Amir.
We'll have them come this way.
Did you compete last year?
Yeah.
So you do high school next year?
Yeah.
Good. How about you? What's your experience last year? Did you have a high school? Good. Thanks so much.
Oh, no.
You don't need a picture.
Can't get out of here without it. Can't get out.
Ooh, this is tricky.
Oh, I put him in the middle. Sorry, that was my fault. He coached me in the middle. There you go.
All right.
Congratulations.
Would you... I need to...
Are there any medals under the...
How many medals? Three.
And just a medal. Do you have one on there?
Just one. I got it. I got it.
Good. So we want to do that now?
Yep. Perfect.
All right, next we have the Marlboro Middle School IESA State Wrestling medalists.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Frank Pudichi. I am the head coach at Marlboro Middle School for wrestling. This year I've had the privilege of... We've had some amazing athletes. One thing, Noah Zluzki right here. Noah's a seventh grader. This is his second year in state qualifier. I want to note that last year he qualified and unfortunately he was in sixth grade, he ended up broken his hand a week before state. And he vowed this year that he was going to make it to state, and he did. And he placed in the 126 weight bracket. He's a very dedicated wrestler, dedicated student, and just an all-around great individual.
Noah, we know that you're here tonight. We will make sure that for next week, even though it's tonight, we will make sure your name is recognized in there so you can get a copy of that today, but we've got a medal up here for you too.
Congratulations.
All right, so next year we trade, right? See you again.
Congratulations.
Picture again. Hot out of habit. Well, you should have a title. Page champion.
We're short. All right, we see an H. Right.
Well, next up, we have the Huntley Hurricanes from the Olympics team here with us. Come on in, guys.
All right. Hello, I'm Crystal Miguel and I am the special services coordinator at Chesapeake Elementary School and the Special Olympics Athletic Director. First and foremost, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to the board, our dedicated parents, and the entire community for the incredible support you've given Special Olympics over the past two years. Your commitment has been invaluable and it has made a profound difference in the lives of our athletes. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of Ms. Bombard, Mr. Bittman, and Ms. Gill at our Special Olympics state tournament this past weekend in Bloomington Normal. Your presence truly showed our athletes that they are supported at every level. This season, we had a wonderful group of athletes participating in basketball. Our high school team consisted of five amazing athletes. Five, no less. Our junior team has six rising stars and our basketball skills team featured eight incredible players. It has been inspiring to see the dedication and growth in all of our athletes. At this point, I'd like to introduce our basketball coaches. These four individuals have been instrumental in the success of our athletes. Please join me in Wathelbing, Shelby Hernandez, and Healy Graffy, the coaches of our high school basketball team, Maggie Hoffman, and Jenna Holtkamp, the coaches of our basketball skills team.
Pass the torch.
Thank you. Thank you, Crystal. I'm so proud to introduce our high school basketball teams who gave their best all season. A huge congratulations to the team for making it to a Special Olympics competition on March 7th and March 8th, where they brought home third place finish in their division. What an incredible, credible team effort. This achievement is a testament to their hard work, perseverance, and perseverance.
Thank you, board, for giving us these great opportunities to play. I have our players come. I caught and Holtkamp caught our skills, which are eight great athletes. We did have two make it to state, however, only one did choose to come down, and that is Gabby Ford. And Gabby Ford won first place. For all skills, they do three different skills. They do a dribbling, a shooting, and a passing. And watching Gabby, I wish his county... Yep, that's all the points. That's all the points. You got it, girl. Keep going, keep going. I feel my heart was probably pounding more than hers. But she did fantastic, so we're really proud of you, Gabby.
As we look back on the 23-24 season, I'm thrilled to share some of the highlights with you. We kicked off Special Olympics at the middle school level with our athletics track and field season. Eight students participated in track and field and four of them went to compete at the prestigious state summer games. What an incredible achievement. Looking ahead at the 24-25 season, it's off to a great start. We have 22 athletes registered and just an hour ago, they had their first practice. We can't wait to see what this season holds for them. We're excited for the growth and the victories that are sure to come. In closing, I want to emphasize how proud we are of each and every athlete who participates in the Special Olympics program. Their determination and spirit inspire us all. Thank you once again to everyone for your unwavering support. Together, we are building a community of success, teamwork, and shared victories. Thank you.
From, from, to give you a little more detail than the 1.9 million, we had 13 claimants over $25,000, which is a lot, claimants over $25,000. And those 13 claimants, the claims approximated $850,000 for those 13 individuals. A few of those are close to the stop loss and eventually may be over the stop loss. But if that's for prior year, well, then, then we start fresh again, as you pointed out, Mr. Quigley, I don't know. So, so it's something that we can, we continue to look at. You know, hopefully February and March will come in a, a, a little lower so that we can start trending a little closer to that 14 million because as, as at this point, we are trending over budget to the 14.24 million. So we'll continue to keep the board's price on that. Other than that, nothing, nothing exceptional to note that we haven't talked about in previous months, but we continue to move forward throughout the year. If I could have any answer, any questions you may have on anything specific?
With the, with the reimbursements happening, do we anticipate that, we have a bubble of teachers that are getting close to retirement, we know that. Would we expect that we might see that increase in those losses then because they're going to try to use their medical coverage before retirement? Have we, have we looked at that? Is there a correlation to any of that? Or would you think that that would happen?
Yeah, we, we really haven't looked at that. I mean, I don't have access to that data because of HIPAA. I can only see so much of that information and I'm not even sure if, based on the details, if HR can get to that.
No, but I can speak on, you know, the retirements, we do have that. This is going to be our biggest year of retirement and it's going to pale off a little bit. We're probably eight to 10 years out from the big bubble would be my prediction. We've got that average age of about 20, 47 right now. So that young group that came in back in the early 2000s or, I would say it's my age. So we'll do that, approaching 50 and other medical stuff starts happening. So I don't know if the, the bubble retirement is going to be large enough quite yet, have enough people to be lost. I'd say that they're ten years out in the long term.
Thank you.
Dr. Zare, those, those that are eight to 10 years out, those are tier two retirees or tier one?
Those would be, those would be tier one retirees. 2012 is a tier two, that's where that began.
Okay.
Yeah, so those will all be mostly tier one. You could see some second career people come in that are taking retirement because they're turning 16.
Right.
And, you know, they come in their 10, 15 years and it'll reduce the duty.
Thank you. Are showing anything for?
No, it's, it's always healthcare right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at the finances.
Of course. There's anything else in this? I mean, I mean, revenue wise, anything that's changed that, that increased?
No, I think, you know, when you look at CPPRT and you look at Medicaid, Medicaid is back, the majority of the reimbursement is going to happen at the end of the year when we receive the cost settlements and we settle on that cost settlement. CPPRT, we still have numerous payments to come in, unlike the state payments, which are consistent, right? We receive consistent amounts from the state for the various grants and reimbursements we receive. It is not that way with CPPRT, it is very random. Sometimes I question how it works because it's really not consistent even year to year on how we receive those funds. The CPPRT could be a little risk. Interest, although interest is kind of tracking based on the economy right now with some of the rates we have, we do have a lot of long-term investments still in the pipeline and things that are going to continue to yield the rates that we lock them in at. But as we approach the next few months and we have to renew some of those CDs and long-term investments, interest earnings will probably come down a little bit. So, as we see the economy coming down a little bit on the, on the return on investment rate.
And the special ed tuition, is that more of a timing thing?
That's more of a timing thing with the state, you know? And that's a reimbursement if you're referring to that categorically.
Even on the expense side, though, we're, we're on a bit.
Correct.
Timing.
Right.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Altmaier on the section? If not, item, which is our revenue contract. One revenue contract for high school offices. Dance. So any questions related to that? Pretty straightforward. Mr. Grady, are you good with that?
Yep.
The board for consent on the 7.5 ERP system conversion to Skyward.
This?
It's been inevitable for many.
It is, yeah, this has been inevitable for sure. But it's also, you know, it's also a hugely exciting opportunity. I think it's an opportunity for the fiscal department, for the HR and payroll departments, for the whole district really as a whole. And I'd say, you know, it's been coming for a long time. Nobody, if you've ever been through a system implementation, financial system conversion and HR payroll system conversion, it's, it can be very painful. It is a very heavy, heavy lift. I've been through several. And so, you know, I could speak, we're going to tag team Dr. Zare and I a little bit on this topic because it impacts really both of our departments significantly. You know, the background on SDS is we've been using it a long time, well over 20 years. And it's, it's really an access database system that primarily, there are some large school, school districts utilizing this system, student data systems. But it is an access, Excel-based system. So if you want fancy reporting, well, we don't get it. It's, it's we as a team, the financial team, we pull that together. We pull the monthly report together, it just doesn't spit out as a system. Under Skyward, well, it will, and we'll talk about Skyward here in a little bit. But, but the background of SDS is we've been there a long time and they recently sold to a company called Link. And when they sold to Link, it almost seems like from a customer service standpoint, they've really stopped supporting SDS customers to, if, if we put in a payment with questions, it takes days, if not weeks sometimes, to get them resolved. Even when you call, it takes days, not weeks, to get some of these things resolved that we are finding. And the other thing is if we need assistance, it's very hard, the customer service is significantly lacking, whereas previously before they sold, it wasn't. And the other big piece is if you're utilizing our system and, and we have, everybody in every building utilizes the financial system, right? Enter purchase orders, to look up purchase orders, to look up invoices, to look up things they need to do at the building level. And sometimes you'll hit enter and you'll wait, and you'll wait. It's a cloud-based system and it's become very slow because they're really not doing the things they need to do on their side to support the cloud system. So we've been, over the years, becoming a little more frustrated with that system. I'll, I'll jump back into payroll, but we're going to have Dr. Zare talk a little bit about the background of ADP and kind of some of the challenges we have there as well, just to give the, the board an understanding of what really, what drove this decision six months ago for us to really start entertaining a new system. Dr. Zare?
Yeah, so ADP enterprise and the HR side of the, the main thing that is, main thing, the big thing, anyone that's hired here has entered into this system and it beats payroll to pay for those employees who clock in and clock out, that's our clock in and clock out system. We just upgraded because they had stopped supporting what we were on into what we call EZ6. It's become way more complicated than what it was originally and ADP is essentially built for the business world. Skyward, which we're seeing some neighboring school districts move to, District 300, U46, the McHenry School Districts are using it, reached out to those folks and it's a lot more user-friendly in terms of what a school district deals with, especially when it comes to like a salary schedule. So for the teachers, for example, when you're putting them into one of those cells, we have to manually enter this in and match everyone up in the system we are now. With this system, we're going to be able to automate things a lot better, entering people into the system and choosing profiles. We've been in ADP so long, there's been a lot of what I call backend fixes. And when people leave the district, especially in payroll, when we have some transition, some of those backend fixes, you find out the hard way, that they're the backend fix every payroll or that they connect with HR. So with this new system and Skyward, it's going to be a lot more user-friendly for our office, our office staff, and also for the employees out there because there will be an interface that they're going to be a part of where they can view things. Essentially, Skyward is made for education and that's something we need to be a part of. And also in terms of having other districts to work with and bounce ideas off of, we don't have that right now. We have an ADP person that we connect with and like I said, they're very business oriented and driven and a lot of our educational lingo just doesn't cross over into that world. It serves its purpose for however long we've had it, but it's time for us to make a move in something that just fits our profile a little bit better.
Yeah, so I'll jump back in and we started this process about six months ago because we knew when we had some turnover in payroll that we had some challenges. What we also knew is the payroll manager we hired utilized for 10 to 12 years Skyward at, at her district. And if you've read the memo, Skyward is located on Stevens Point, Wisconsin, and approximately 90% of districts in Wisconsin utilize Skyward and about 40%, some very large, you know, Peoria, U46, Indian Prairie, some of the Naperville schools, District 300, a lot of the schools, 40% of Illinois schools are using this software. So our payroll manager had experience and when she, when she came in and saw the ADP system, she said, oh my, we need to do something. And my, and my director of finance, Jenny Sikora, also had about 15 years of ERP, school district ERP, Skyward experience, not only with, on the payroll side, but also on the financial side. So they, they were certainly one of the points to say, hey, this is probably one of the very first ERP systems that we should look at. And after talking to districts such as 300 and U46 and some of the Naperville schools, we had an opportunity to go to the Glenbrook School District, some of the teams, and actually had a hands-on experience with that school district showing us why they love Skyward. From there, we, we had Skyward come in and do an all-day demo here in, in our conference room 180, the Tariori Room, and from fiscal to payroll to, to human resources. And they showed us every kind of bit of this system and I will say that everybody at the end of the day was like, but when can we sign up? Like they are looking forward to moving to a more operationally efficient system, a system that is dedicated and geared towards education specifically. So from, on the finance side, there will be a lot of operational efficiency from financial reporting end. They have a built-in paperless process system so that we can do not only mileage reimbursements, but we can do expense reimbursements in the paperless format. So we will continue to use the system we have that we're setting up right now for the next year and a half or so. But if, if and when we do move to Skyward, we will switch over and use the Skyward system for that paperless platform to do some of those things that will help us out significantly. So, so that, that's kind of the why. We did provide you, which I thought, I love this, when we asked the team to, to pull this together, we said, hey, department by department, after the demo, can you, can you let us know why, can you let us know why you want to go to Skyward, right? They're not, they're not fearful, a few of them are fearful of change, but, but they are looking forward to this change because all of these different things that they see as a benefit, a few of them even provided close for, for the board so that you could see that. So that's the why and why we're looking at Skyward. And the cost obviously is, is also why we're looking at Skyward today. And I provided a financial segment as part of this memo today. SDS costs approximately $18,000 a year for that, for our financial system, so it's really not that much money. ADP, on the other hand, because they provide the HR enterprise system, that's the HR system platform that we have, they also provide the e-time system, that's time management, labor management, and they provide the payroll services that we receive. That approximates $240,000 a year. So today we're spending about $258,000 a year, whereas moving forward, once we get beyond this implementation period, the cost of Skyward is $48,000 a year. So just after a couple of years, because it'll take about a year and a half, two years to break even because of the upfront implementation cost and the upfront investment cost to bring Skyward in, it will bring significant savings and operational improvements to both HR, payroll, or to all HR, payroll and fiscal. So another reason we are, we are very excited about Skyward coming in. We did ask them to sharpen their pencil numerous times, so they did come back on several occasions and then sharpened their pencil. I was able to reach out to a lot of other school districts of our size, even larger, to find out and make sure that, well, we're in the market. You know, other school districts, other larger school districts just to the east of us are paying almost twice as much as we're paying. And what's interesting is this is an ERP system and it's not necessarily driven based on the number of users, right? It's still just a system, right, that is going to process your financials, is going to process your onboarding, your offboarding and things of that nature. So I feel like we, we, we got them to a point where I'm very comfortable with the dollars I'm seeing here, the initial investment, for the implementation and certainly on an ongoing basis, the $48,000 a year, which is locked for the first several years. Year four, there would be an uptick of 4% and then locked again. So we would only see that one increase in year four and that was also negotiated because they had us, they had us as approximately a 3% increase year over year and I said, yeah, that's not going to work. So we feel very comfortable on the financial side as well. At this time, I'd like to open it up for any questions you may have because it is, it is a large investment, we'll ask the budget separately. We can, I would anticipate if the board approved this, that we would incur some of the costs this year, we would kind of balance this out over two fiscal years. And then obviously moving forward, in fiscal year 27 would be the first year we would introduce those savings, we would see those savings. With that, are there any questions?
When you think about the data that's housed right now in ADP, ADP's been along for, around for a long time, right? And some of their systems have proprietary backends to them. Did you look into the, the migration process? Because you're, there's probably a certain element of that that you're going to want to keep over and, and historically be able to look at. And on top of that, what about training for staff and is that built into the estimate as well?
Yeah, so they, they do have a fairly intensive project planning team that would come out and meet with us and, and help run the project planning. We anticipate this to be, this is a 12-month implementation, right? The date right now that we have set aside that if we do have this approved would be in April 1st, implementation date, April 1st, by the way, 2026, okay? Which will give us a year from now to prepare and get ready so that we can migrate that data, that we can bring over the history. Every, every couple of weeks, we're going to have to-dos, department by department. We're going to have milestones every month. It is, it is something that every single employee in HR and every single employee in payroll and fiscal will be part of because part of it is making sure that we have really good clean data in our system, that we can carry over that clean data and migrate all of the data we need to have come over and then obviously make sure that the way in which we're bringing over that data, that the system is working as we want it to work when we flip the switch on April 1st.
So with that April 1st switch date, is there a cushion if things aren't going as well? Is there going to be an overlap where you're paying for ADP and, and Skyward if it doesn't?
We're hoping that by January, we're hoping we don't have to because when we flip the switch, we flip the switch.
Yeah.
Right? But between January and April, right, of, of next year, we will be testing the system heavily. I don't want to say we're going to be running parallel, but in a test environment, we're going to be somewhat running parallel. We need to make sure that we can run payroll on Skyward, we can make sure that we can close the month Skyward and a month of January, February and March. We need to make sure we can onboard, offboard, that we can roll people's salaries with a, you know, with a flip of a switch and give them the, the anticipated raises they need in accordance with the salary schedule. Look at that, that actually works on the Skyward side, it's very manual and our side, one person at a time. So, so yes, and, and we do, and the benefit, and Dr. Zare mentioned this is, they have done this with so many other school districts, right? So I know the CFO over at U46, I know the CFO at Indian Prairie, I know the CFO at 300 and they've all been through this implementation process. So I've had discussions with them to, okay, how's it going? Why isn't it going well? What could you have done better? And we're going to learn from that through, you know, collaboration and dialogue with other school districts as well. A little more information than you.
No, that's good.
That's, that's what we don't really have today with ADP at all. And Mr. Thompson, he will provide us with the, the download, with that information app active too, we will need access to it. W2, that nature for a certain number of years. And then ADP is also aware of our intention.
That's what I was going to ask, so you're?
Mark was able to meet with our, our salesperson on the phone and, you know, let her know she understands the direction we're headed.
And so non-renewal consent is given?
Correct. So the contract that we have today, that's a great question. The contract that we have today with ADP, you know, the reason why we're moving on this as swiftly as, as we are, ends in October of '25. And so they reached out to me several months ago about, you know, wanting to give us another three-year, five-year contract and I said, of course, we need to talk. And the current contract that we have is evergreen, so it'll continue to go month to month. They will absolutely support us for as long as we need them. So we're not renewing the contract, we're just going to go evergreen month to month with a 90-day written notice to get out.
That's good.
And we're in a similar arrangement with SDS as well. We're not really under contract with them either. That has just been evergreen since, well, the beginning of time, frankly. So, so we're in good shape on the contract side.
Thanks.
I have a couple, two comments and a question. Question I have, so the cloud computing, Mr. Altmaier and I talked about this earlier today, but the cloud computing, so being able to put all of our data in the cloud, which I think is an excellent idea because it makes it redundant and reliable, highly available. They're saying estimate 9,500 students and then the total is $1,900, but that's for a 36-month contract. So if our enrollment is, I mean, I know we're going 95 because that's roughly about where we are now, but three years from now, are they willing to adjust that number and will that really give us any substantial?
Yeah, that's a great question because what you're looking at is obviously the quote, so there will be a written, written agreement that kind of outlines every little piece of that. And I think that's a great point to make sure that, that if we do have a decline in enrollment.
We have some flexibility.
We have some flexibility, but, but, you know, it, it's on both sides.
Right.
And it's not for the cloud, you know, that, that amount of money for, for 9,500 students is not a lot of money.
No, no, it's not.
So whether it goes up 1,000 or goes down 1,000, but it's still an important point because it is still dollars that the community is paying for.
Right. And I, I just want to make sure because the whole quote, that's an additional cost, so that's, that's outside of what the initial charge is. So we are looking to use that cloud service, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the two comments that I had, I mean, I think, I do software design and development as a, as a business and I think what they've laid out is, is very smart. I think that there's a lot of onus on us as a district to make sure that we're accepting responsibility for this and as you and I talked about, it is a heavy lift for a district our size. So, you know, in order for this to succeed, our staff really has to buy into it, they have to understand that this is something that we have to do. I know you will have the support of the board to make sure that that happens, but we, we need to make sure that, you know, we can get this implemented, that we have a way to, you know, cross over from one system to the other. You know, I, I think that the plan that they have in place seems like it's very manageable and it's got a good methodology behind it. So I applaud you for going through and doing some of that due diligence, making sure that we're getting a cost-effective solution. It's a lot of money right now, but it's going to buy you a lot of efficiencies. And as you and I talked about with our new website, you know, we've talked about the transparency and getting more data out there that people can digest a little easier by having these reports be able to be churned out quickly, quickly, and you can use things like, you know, business objects and other solutions to be able to play that graphically. I think it's going to allow the public to be able to see finances and slice and dice it in a maybe more digestible format, less labor intensive for your team too.
Yes.
This is probably one of the things we'll do is we'll make sure, Mr. Altmaier, we'll touch base on that enrollment because our enrollment number is a little bit less than that.
Yeah.
It's 8,400, we want to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, they're probably.
Depending on what their increments are, we'll want to double check that just in case.
For sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, it's, it's more of a comment. Tony, you may remember this going back a long time ago, the days of the, was it CFAC? Is that what, what it was called?
Whatever it might have been, yeah.
It was like 17 years ago and this was one of the points that was brought up by that advisory committee, the Financial Advisory Committee, was moving away from SDS entirely and moving to something different. I think that, those days were long before even Skyward existed as a company. So moving away from it would not necessarily have bought us any kind of efficiency, it would have just gotten us off of one system and onto another one. And, and as I recall, the price tag on doing that was well over a million dollars even to make that change back in, in those days. So clearly the prices come down, it has become a lot more palatable financially than what it was back in those days, even, even the value of the dollar 17 years ago. So thank you for doing this exploration. I guess the, the bittersweet part of it is that it took so long to get here, but it's, and it's been done out of necessity. So we were ma, managed to extract all the blood out of the turnips in the systems that we have been using. And I remember even when, when we moved to ADP, that was such a huge, big step for us because we were doing payroll manually back in those days with, it was like punch cards or something like that.
And that, well.
Yeah, it, it was, it was because there were a lot of errors in those payroll runs. I remember seeing the board reports on, on how many things were done because, because it was a manual entry process. So even the migration to ADP was quantically forward. But to me, this seems like a no-brainer, the same kind of quantum leap forward that is a lot more robust in, in meeting the needs of the district in 2025 and beyond. So I applaud the team in doing this research to, to get out there and talk to other districts to have the demonstration, to do all the due diligence and, and advancing this going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. First one is around change management. Obviously, we've had processes in place for all of this, so this is a good opportunity to look at everything with fresh eyes and maybe use more of a standard process for that. I love the fact that it's more paperless and it's going to be integrated in, in there. We had a little bit of a conversation last week about this or earlier this week, I forget. And the expense reporting and all that being in there is, is really good. One thing I think you need to consider is, you kind of made a comment about, we've all been through these sort of big changes before and it puts a lot of pressure on the staff. So think about how we're going to actually staff this? Are we going to have someone who is the owner of this and what happens to their day job when they do that? Those kind of things.
Or do you, or do you possibly need? Yeah, they, they.
Or better support.
Yeah, well, they have, they have support on their side, certainly. And between Adam and my, Dr. Zare and myself, certainly I've, I've been through several implementations. So from an ownership standpoint, I think we're going to take the lead.
Picture memo.
Yeah. My memo.
We've had a whole.
You know, the, the key with this is, is having, having really user buy-in, right, is number one. And if this doesn't tell you, right, what user buy-in is going to look like, and the team knows, right, the team knows this is for the betterment of, it's going to make their job a little easier, right? Especially on the, on the HR side and payroll side. On the finance side, there's a lot of financial reporting opportunities and obviously going paperless as well. I think the excitement is there, so we have people's attention. They want to move to the system. And then it's just making sure we're following the project plan and that we're meeting on a regular basis basis and we're meeting the milestone dates as set by the team upfront. And we're going to do the best we can, for sure. We, I think as a team, we have a large enough team between HR, payroll and myself, we've got a few directors in there as well. I think we have a large, I think we, we will make it work. Yeah. But, but I agree with you 100%. But, but I agree with you 100%.
And any other infrastructure changes? If it's cloud-based, do we, is the Wi-Fi and the Ethernet, everything good there?
Yeah, I don't think, from a technology standpoint, I don't think we really have to do anything. Technology certainly will be involved on the crossover and to make sure that we, we have what we need from a platform standpoint, but because it's cloud-based, it's not likely to need additional servers and switches and things of that nature. But we do need to make sure that it is doing the things we need to do, right? The, the good thing about this, this one system as well is today payroll is not interfaced with finance. It is a manual process to upload payroll into SDS twice a month. And it's not an easy upload. It's an access database, creative accounting to make it work, to make the balance.
Like, yeah. The thousand GL account.
Yes, it's, it's challenging, whereas obviously this is a one-system platform. Everything is completely integrated and those things are just going to happen without, of having to post a manual journal entry twice a month. So, so, it's going to be a good thing.
You had me sold on access database.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Sorry, the question just hit my head. Regarding network security, they're probably, they're really safe as far as cloud computing and payroll and all the kind of integration data that we're talking about.
Yeah, that's, Mrs. Wiley and I talked a little bit about that as well. You know, the good news on that front is, is they did let us know that obviously they had not had any issues. The other good news is I know a lot of CFOs at all of those districts I talked about and, and kind of statewide, and I've never once heard an issue, that I haven't heard an issue with Skyward on that front.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think, and I think we.
But it's worth always, it's worth having that conversation, for sure.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I think our IT department, too, as we talked about, you know, they were, they're able to put into place a lot of good layers when we, when Power School had their breach. So, I feel confident that you talking with our IT department will make sure that that security is layered the right way because we are dealing with personal information. We've got social security numbers, date of birth.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think not only just for the use of the system, but the conversion effort as well. So, I think that we're in a good place, knowing that we thought our IT is really competent in making sure that they've got those safeguards in place.
I agree. Thank you.
John, did you have any questions related to this?
Nope, I'm good.
All good. Yeah, I mean, commentary-wise, it's, it's, yeah, it's been a long time coming. I mean, and I know you guys have fetched together the best you could for a long time and you've done a pretty good job, but it's, it's time to get into the 21st century here in operations. So, yeah, it's always, you know, always, you know, a little painful cost-wise initially upfront, but long-term, it actually saves us money. Not just saving us dollars, it's saving us operational efficiencies that are more important. So, yeah, I, I think the fact that you've got people on board who've worked with it, you've got the experience of all your other CFOs who've worked with it, you've got to utilize all of that to help you get through it because it's a matter, it is a big lift. It's going to take you a lot of time to get through it, but wish you luck. We'll, we'll keep it moving. Right, yeah, all right. So, is everybody good with moving this forward? All right, we'll move that forward. Consent, we'll move on to 7.6, the AHSA renewal.
So, this is pretty routine, not a heavy lift at all. Just looking at signing the bylaws and agreement to that HHS would be recognized by the IASB through IESA. Again, there would be no membership dues or state series fees for the 25, 26 school term per the action that IESA Board of Directors just recently took. And so, again, this is just going ahead and approving that membership and that all of our coaches, athletes in the school will follow all of those bylaws for the 25, 26 school year. Any questions?
To, to be clear, it's free? There's, they're not charging anything? Is that because you get the money from?
It's for the state series fees. So, a couple of years ago, there was a, when they were losing the revenue because of the no state series during the pandemic, there was a tiered, if you will, based on size they collected. And so, I think this is still rolling out that savings so that they're not just, you know, banking up. They've been utilizing that. So, in the, in the, in the memo there, there should be an attachment that shows that. So, it's at an annual basis that they would state out. In a minute, you're going to see what IESA has for their fees. And so, again, that's just the state series entrance fee component. There's other fees that go along with the sports and whatnot.
I was surprised.
Not the whole thing is free, no, just the state series part.
Free, free, no.
Any other questions on IESA?
Why don't you go ahead and skip to the.
Sure, so we'll skip down. Again, another routine component of that is IESA, so our middle school outlined in the, doctor, it's not something that we would sign on for here, but I wanted to outline what the IESA dues would be for participation. It's the same for both of our middle schools, so it doesn't matter on the size of that. And at different points throughout the year, we would be posting what those fees were. There's a membership fee for each school to be in IESA, it's $275. And then it breaks down for a variety of, of different things. So, our cross-country, that's at $120 per school. Then if you jump down to like chess, it's $20 per individual that would be in there. Track and field, wrestling, with their $70 to $75. So, it varies depending on what that sport or activity is. And some of those chess and bowling are by individual student. There is a slight change, and if there are some questions, I'm going to phone a friend over there. Doctor Zer had worked a little bit with our two middle schools. Something that is not on the list here right now is boys' basketball. Our girls' basketball at the middle schools has not participated in the state series because of when our season is and when the state series, how that overlaps, it doesn't align with our conference. And so, boys' basketball hasn't been that many years that they have been involved in that. Some challenges, and this is where I'll have you jump on in if I've got some of these wrong. The recommendation is it is a challenge to continue on with serving or the season ends, and then there's about a month lag time before the state series. So, some of the other schools are, their, their season is a little bit different. And we then have a lot of our players leaving and going into their club sports and activities. And so, there's been some challenges over the last couple of years with that of getting the team back together, trying to get playing time, trying to get practice time and all of those things. And so, Dr. Zer met with both of the schools and representatives. There were some things because the other seasons are going on, gym space, the components there. They don't want to take away an opportunity for students, but something could we do instead of the state, state series, maybe a tournament that we would host? So, there could be some games that align with the end of our season. Doctor, there are a couple of other things that, that came up.
Yeah, the big thing is that, that boys' season, back when we did this and I was a big proponent of this, go get a couple of state trophies at the end of the day, and we did. But things evolved since we did that. What happens to our boys' basketball right before winter break, they can, so, two weeks off, and then the state series doesn't start until January 22nd.
The end of January, yeah.
This year. And so, they have all this downtime, the two weeks of a break, and then you're looking about two and a half, three weeks before you go into your regional. And what is happening, the feeder teams are starting up, travel teams are starting up, wrestling is starting up, and we are putting another sport into the gym with wrestling, cheer, and some other things. And so, what was happening, early morning practices were becoming difficult because kids were coming in to that early morning practice, having their school day, and then going to their feeder team. And it was just tough to get these kids back around and to keep that team together. And our coaches wanted to be respectful. They wanted to wrestle and go do the wrestling. So, the team that they had built in November and December wasn't quite the same with mid-January would roll around. So, the coaches I worked with at Heinemann and Marlowe said, we're already playing more games than our conference teams because they, they do some tournaments and set that up. And they said, one way to make this up, to get more games and more opportunities for the boys would be to add a tournament where you get a guaranteed three or four games. Right now, with the regional, you're guaranteed one. I mean, you want them done and that's it. So, I think reverting back to this, the kids are actually going to get more games and we're going to have a clean cut at winter break, so that the kids can transition into wrestling in January, and then if they're a part of the feeder program, they can do that, too.
Bottom line there would be the fees and the activities that we have a number of other sports and activities that we participate in, but these would be at the state level at IESA. So, there are a number of opportunities for them to go ahead and do. And if things were to change in the future, if, if schedules changed within our conference for any of the sports that are out there, we could look at possibly tapping into state series in the future.
We did try to get the conference to flip everything to an IESA schedule, and we were voted down.
No.
The center, we were within that.
Dismissed.
Any questions or concerns for that memo? Okay, thank you.
So, with those two items, the IESA and the IESA, are we all good?
Yep.
Moving those forward? Those forward for consent, we can move on to human resources.
Mr. Cranny?
Yeah, 8.1, school calendars for '26, '27, and '27, '28. Dr. Zer?
Yeah, so, in front of you, we actually have two school calendars. Sorry, it's on the IESA memo. I turned our school calendars up real quick. So, we're looking at '26, '27, and '27, '28. Our calendar committee has gotten into a pretty good groove here. We're setting up that initial start date and end date. We built in all the holidays here, the institute days, something that they've come out of this committee. We had that institute day this year on, in January when we came back from break. The kids did come back, the teachers came back, and the curriculum department got some really positive feedback on that. So, we're going to continue to move that forward. It'll be over the next three years right now that we're locked into, but the calendar committee has been in agreement with what we have set up and proposed here. You know, the big discussion is always around institute days and when's the best time to do that, and that goes back and forth. So, we, we try to, you know, line those up on when it would be most beneficial for our teachers in terms of what may be introduced. And then also early release dates, we've tried to spread that out and balance that a little bit, where it's on some different dates, you know, across the board, so the same things aren't being impacted, especially at the elementary where we have that repetitive day. But we still have the two full weeks of winter break. One of those years in there, we get a little extra-long spring break because of Friday, because Friday, following on that Friday before we go into spring break. So, nothing really major here on the calendars. Obviously, any new holidays would be introduced. Between now and then, we would come back and make an amendment.
It's been a while since we've brought more than one calendar recommendation forward. In the past, we had done two or three at a time. We have now gotten a lot of feedback about the pattern of how, where we place things and how that impacts the student achievement and whatnot. And so, in an effort to be able to get out there, to have those posted, we feel that that will be a benefit for our community, our parents, and will definitely be for, you know, staff. But looking at that, that piece of, we have heard that there are, you know, there are some of the careers where they've got to put in their time requests for vacation many, many months, sometimes even a year in advance to be able to do that. So, we'd like to throw out two of those and get those approved and posted just so that our community is aware of what that calendar will look like.
Is there a reason why the high school graduation dates are TBA for both of those calendars?
Yeah, and are we, I don't think we're locked in with a contract yet.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Do you have visibility to the MCC calendar? Are they doing the same type of thing, just for the folks that were in the dual degree or some of the other classes where they're taking things at MCC? Is that considered at all?
We have not considered MCC calendars for both.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty consistent with that. I know that they'll, they'll have graduations before us a little bit ahead of time for our dual degree, but it has worked out in the past.
Issues with that, yeah.
I know we're pretty in line. There's, you know, a little bit of fluctuation depending on other districts within the county. Spring break has been a consistent within our county. All of our districts have kind of agreed informally that we would continue, you know, keeping that relatively, or similar, and there's kind of a pattern depending on how many days fall in March and all of that.
At least three days in March.
In that last week, right. Dr. McCrando, you guys regularly meet with MCC when we're looking at whether it's the dual degree or just dual credit classes? And those things are kind of discussed on an annual basis, aren't they?
They are. So, this year, it does happen to fall on the same day as graduation for us and for MCC, but then last year, it was a week later. So, they kind of alternate. Spring break is typically the same time, so it's a nice alignment, but.
But in terms of one course is ending, when our vacations, our institutes all?
Yeah, so, spring break would be the one that we'd be, we're about winter break and we're, we're pretty good.
Perfect, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing two years at once.
We think we got all the days in there. Pretty confident, yeah.
This is one of what we will do once it's approved. We can go ahead and work with Mrs. Woods once, well, we, you know, be bringing a contract here anyway, and then we can go in and immediately plug in those dates we would need to approve that, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any more questions for HR?
Nope.
If not, I will turn it over to Building the Grounds, Dr., or Mr. Troy.
He's the doctor now. Yes, I appreciate that. Item 9.1, O&M updates. Mr. Linkwist, I'm just going to go right to you and what do you got to highlight this month?
Good evening. A couple of items I'd like to touch base on, the O&M update. Item A is the natural gas sales. Early last week, Mr. Altmyer and myself were contacted by our natural gas sales broker with the great opportunity to lock in a portion of our natural gas purchasing. That portion would be the fixed basis portion of that. We then roped in Mr. Troy, who is the authorization for the Board of Education, to sign on an energy contract. So, go over the contract and go ahead and sign it for us. Attached is our current contract, we're in symmetry, that expires in August of 2026. And it shows, we were locked in at roughly seven cents a therm that contract, which at the time was probably a good, good contract. Yep. We are now going to do a three-year deal with Constellation, which starts September of 2026, at one and a half cents per therm. Right? Yeah, so, talk about a great.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty unbelievable that we were able to essentially hit the lottery on this one. I mean, that's a, that's a massive amount of savings.
Yeah.
We jumped on it.
Our broker is still out there looking for the rest of our portions of the natural gas purchasing. If any more opportunities arise, she's going to contact us immediately.
Yeah.
Item B of the O&M updates is, Union Solar attaches some pictures. This is show of aggression, what's going on out in the field. I had that for last week. Get some pictures and be more than happy to answer any questions you have on O&M updates.
Is there a, is there a timeline for going live on that? I know ComEd's going to be the one that we have to get okays from and approvals and all sorts of fun stuff like that. Is there a target date?
Yeah, there is a target date. They have a project plan as well, and Mr. Linkwist and I have been meeting with them. We have a Google meeting every couple of weeks just to make sure we're, we're staying in tune as to what they're doing since it's on our property, and we want to make sure it's moving forward. So, everything is, they are, they are meeting all of them milestones currently. They do think by mid-July that they will be kind of firing this up, so to speak. They are tracking towards that. You know, after that date, there's still a few things that they need to do working with ComEd to make sure that they can get all of the paperwork done on their end. They got to go through the testing with ComEd and a lot of other things as well. Right now, you know, when working with the company that is looking for subscribers on that, and we're going to. that, and we're going to send out some communication to the community regarding their opportunity with regard to community solar, you know, we're being told by them that, you know, expect it to be late in the calendar year for which the credits will start showing up on people's ComEd bill or the beginning of next year. It may be a little before that based on the completion date of July, but they usually build in, you know, three or four months cushion because there's always something that happens during, during one of these installation of a community solar project. So they are tracking. You will start to see a raise, you know, later in the spring with hopefully with a go-live date, but not really go-live for the community closer to probably the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
Mr. Altmaier or Mrs. Barr, well, that's kind of when it would be go-live. That communication, Mrs. Barr, I think you've been working with them, fine-tuning, clarifying because there was some confusion. That will be going out very shortly for the community, so.
Yes, that's correct. I've had many, many questions, haven't I, with Charles Meyer? But yes, just because, you know, it's a clear communication around this, just want to make sure our community understands who the author is. And so, yeah, we're getting towards the end of that, and I would expect by, it was probably early next week is when we would get communication out about that.
How many, refresh my memory, how many subscribers or people can jump on this? Because it's going to be a limited basis. I just don't, I just don't remember what that number might be.
We don't have an exact number for that. What we've been told by ComEd is that they feel comfortable that anybody who wants to be a part of this can be a part of this.
Okay.
So they've, yeah, so that's what they're...
Mrs. Barr, and there's, there's a couple of different things. There's part of our project as well as other opportunities, and I think that's why they're talking about being able to accommodate a number of subscribers. Is that correct?
Yeah. The way we're going with this is to join a community solar project rather than the Huntley specific one because the Huntley specific one has specific parameters and limitations around who can be a part of that, which I wasn't comfortable with. And so basically, we're going to just invite the community to use our Huntley code and be a part of the community solar, which will provide them a 10% discount, potentially a 20% discount if they qualify, income eligible.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
It does, because I think originally it was just the Huntley solar community project. So it's good that they're expanding that horizon so that other people in the community can still participate in the program, not the direct connection, if you will...
You understand, yeah.
To the local solar farm that's going to be here in Huntley.
Yeah.
I understand it.
It's been quite a thing, but we're going to get it right. And I just want to make sure it's available to all and so I think we're there.
Yeah, no, I, I've been down this road before professionally, so I'm very familiar with the way this goes.
I love, which is why I ask 500 thousand questions. Get there.
No, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions on this?
Yeah, anything else from the committee or the board? Thank you. All right, with that, anything on the year-end report or, I'm sorry, let's move on to the year-end report then.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you the operations and maintenance 2025 annual report, which is off of report on February 24th. Page two kind of touches base on the history of how this district has grown a little bit. In 2005, we went from 840,000 square foot for our buildings to over 1.4 million square feet. The present day now, the O and M department is maintaining over 1.5 million square feet of building space. Pages four and five touch base on how the staff has grown, our great staff, known on department on, we have 11 maintenance employees and 10, I believe, for a custodial. And it kind of shows the square footage that it covers per person in those pages, those graphs. When I was putting page six together, fiscal history report, kind of jogged a memory on statement Mr. Troy made last year. Think he said he had joined the board in 2009 and the gas electric cost was $1.64 square foot. On present day, we're at $0.64 square foot. Kind of shows what our energy conservation projects are really doing for the district for gas electric. The other line items are going up, but then again, what else isn't going up in this country right now? Page seven, reflects on what projects are coming up this summer. Summer projects, some has been approved already for asphalt replacements, the chill replacements, the carpet replacements, and there's a few coming up as well for the summer. There's a lot going on this summer, reflect on that one. Page nine, energy conversation page. This was built to reflect on our annual savings of our conservation projects. The one I really like to point out is the third one from the bottom, the line item on the bus solar production. Our buses consumed over 72,000 kilowatts, electric buses last year. Our solar produced over 290,000, 91,000 kilowatt hours. That shows that we put back to the grid and saved over 219,000 kilowatt hours with that solar production. This is the first year we were able to run full reports, January to summer on that solar that was put in. Page 10, reflects on our grant money and rebate money being received since this report was generated in 2009. We are inhering $2 million in rebate and incentives and grant money for doing these types of projects.
Excluding the money we receive from ComEd for solar?
Correct, yeah. Excluding the money that we have yet to receive or...
Or that we have received from ComEd.
Right. So they like to call it... Correct. The last three pages kind of reflect on what the O and M department does as far as preventative maintenance, the work orders that come in, the amount of workers for that year. So 2024, we had over 7,500 workers come in through the department. And the last page reflects May and August are obviously our busiest times with school ending, school starting in August. Happy you're set up. You have to answer any questions I have on this report. Again, thank you for letting me bring it to the board.
Thank you for presenting it. And also thank you to your entire O and M staff for getting all those work orders done and looking at the average days of completion, just over five. That's a huge lift by your team, but please extend the thanks and appreciation for another year of excellent work and keeping our buildings in excellent condition and addressing the staff needs accordingly.
Thank you. Move along, Mr. Troy.
I also noted on their, on the upcoming year of work, I didn't see any roofing issues.
Thankfully.
Right on. Nice change. And I know Doug mentioned all of that when he laid this out before. It's just nice to see no roofing issues coming up this summer because that's a usually pretty large expense.
The trends are starting to go asphalt and carpet.
Yeah.
We're going to be seeing a lot of those.
But it's a lot different than roofing, so.
Yeah.
Jingles and all that fun stuff. So any questions or comments from the committee or the board?
Thank you.
Not hearing any. Thank you again for the report.
All right, that. Number 10, legislation and policy. There's lots of noise on the legislation side, but nothing really actionable at this point to talk through. We will move it to number 11, community relations and student outreach committee, Ms. Murray.
Thank you. Mrs. Barr, do you want to go with your report?
Sure, be happy to. So in the board memo to the board, I outlined that our current mass identification system, which is School Messenger, is up for renewal. So I don't know that you recall, but it was about a year ago. We were notified that our current mass identification system, which the switch rate was no longer going to be supported. So we did a little research and came up with School Messenger. School Messenger is owned by Power School, so that was one of the reasons why it seemed to make sense to us. The platform sits within Power School and is integrated. So after a year, just one year, because I kind of wanted to see how this was going to work and also we had to make a decision very quickly. And so in looking at the past year, the system has actually worked very well. It's been very reliable. Once we got it off the ground and everyone was trained, we've had very little issues. And so I don't, I don't get too many calls, too many questions, created, you know, training materials for everybody, and so far, so good. So I would like to recommend that the board take a look at the contract and consider it for approval at the next board meeting, which will be next week, the 20th. We will be paying slightly less for it this year, $10,372, than we did last year because we don't have the boarding fees and that sort of thing. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. I got, I wanted to make a comment regarding something I saw on social media. I know there's some chatter on numerous sites of posts and whatnot just regarding the pictures, Empire Photography and the pricing of the pictures. And I know there was numerous Facebook pages that mentioned certain things, so I wanted just to look into that myself. And I looked at my picture prices. I looked at a friend of mine that has kids in elementary, because I don't have elementary to see the correlation, if one related to another. But then I looked at our contracts that we have, and I know Ms. Woods worked very hard on that. So, and I saw a difference. And so I was like, okay. So I reached out to her and got some clarification, but I know it was a price thing, I know it was a shipping thing, I know, but it was mentioned. Ms. Woods did say in our, when our meeting, when we approved this for the 25 to 28 school year, we did say if you preorder, you can have it, if you have like children in three different locations, you can have one shipping to whatever school or your house or whatnot. But I know that needed to be clarified. I know the quality was, some people brought that up, and I know, but then it turned into somewhat of an attack on board members choosing this and so, and that we're not looking out for stakeholders and, you know, which we need regarding that. So I wanted just to comment to that because I know we didn't sit there and spend the time doing that. I know Ms. Woods did that, and I know she spends a great deal of research looking for the best company for our district. We trust that recommendation, we trust her. And so any questions that I feel like the community has, needed to go to her? Nor did I read in any comments like, oh, when I reach out to the district, they said this, or I found out this. Nobody said that. So I know it was a quick phone call. I just said, I'm just going to call her and just ask, you know, what I could do about or see what the difference was, what was going on. So it was one phone call, she had no one reach out to her at all. And so I wanted to, just to, I just wanted to encourage our community, if we have any questions, just come to us or, you know, to Ms. Woods. In this situation, she was going to handle the whole contract and, you know, the question was answered immediately. She reached out and I let, I'll let her speak to that. Would you want to speak to that on what, what you found out? Because I thought it's just really important just to recognize that she did all this work and that the fact that people went to social media to complain about it and not to her was, we just want to be the information source here, so.
The committee and I did all this work. And it was, it was a tough decision to switch because the district has been in life touch for probably 20 years, probably over that. And, but we had experienced a lot of customer service issues, both on the aspect of parents and just as far as like office staff and that kind of thing. There was just some issues, we'll say. So that was one of our decision factors in going up to this. After I contacted our representative at Empire, after I spoke with you, Mrs. Murray, while I was on the phone, the representative apologized so beautifully, and she immediately corrected the error. We both found out at the same time that the incorrect pricing file had been downloaded into the district's account for the spring pictures, and that only affects children who did not break kindergarten through this rate. And while I was on the phone, she immediately corrected that problem, and I could actually see it live when she corrected it. And in addition, she initiated refunds to anyone who had already purchased their pictures under incorrect pricing. So I just want to reiterate, you know, please, I'm more than happy to help the public and anybody who has any questions, you know, please continue your call. I'm happy to help.
I think one of the things that we just had, one of our leadership meetings, and Owen, Mrs. Woods shared that there was that incorrect component, even though it was corrected right away. We have the perfect opportunity. Our newsletter is coming. We've asked that, we're going to have a blurb in there, just sharing the error that was made those individuals probably already have had, but we can also reiterate, if you do have questions, first and foremost, I want them to call their school, who can then get in contact, you know, with the right place for that. So we'll add that in there as well so that they know where to go in, you know, that rationale. But we were going to put that in this newsletter just as again, it was an error, it was corrected, but if there were, you know, questions or concerns, where should they go? And we'll get them the right information. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all set, so moving on. Number 12.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Murray. 12, first we have the minutes for February 20th, the Board of Education meeting. Any comments? All right, so we will move those forward. And then 12, two, budget priorities from the board. So we added this as an idea to kind of help shape the budget invoice that's being created because the budget is being worked on by the administration. They're structuring it, and I think it's important for us as a board to kind of talk through what we would like to see in the budget for next year. So we added this in there, and I don't know if anybody else has any comments on that. I do have a few, but.
My, my biggest concern is what we're looking to budget as far as CPI, because I think that that's going to be a significant danger this year. So there probably have to be multiple calculations on what that possibly could look like because I don't think it's going to be as robust as what we saw last year or as favorable. I think it's, it's going to sink. So I think that that's going to be a significant risk for this next budget on the revenue side. That's like my biggest concern.
Yeah, for, for the FY '26 budget, I don't want to say we're locked and loaded, but we do have obviously last year's levy that has been approved. And next year's CPI came in at a little higher than we thought, originally at 2.6%. Came in at 2.9%. So that is currently being reflected within that budget. I know there is, you know, we had talked, at the last levy hearing in December, we had talked about the process of if the board wishes to abate on an annual basis, we should do so, you know, at that point in time each and every year. So if we do want to pull that 2.9% down to 2%, you know, I will, as part of the budget process, share with the board what, what that means in terms of an abatement and what that number would look like. And we can also look at, essentially, if we were to take something less than 2.9, which certainly, that's not my recommendation, I think is the way to go, we can certainly look at what something less than 2.9 would be. And then for the out years, for the continued out years of the five-year plan, what's currently baked into the five-year plan, historically, we have used 2.3% and 2%. So we're relatively somewhat conservative, but right, it may be a little higher, might be a little lower. I wish I could predict the future on the economy. It may make a lot of money, but that's historically what we've done because that has been a historical aberration.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's actually was my first point, which was, we had a pretty robust discussion in the December levy hearing around what it would look like for last year, which we did, which was trying to estimate a 2% impact for existing homeowners and then looking at what it would be for next year or so this upcoming levy and also targeting that 2%. And I think there was an abatement number, I want to say 400,000 to 500,000 roughly that was built into that. So to me, I would like the budget, the costs, to reflect something around that. Again, this is for a board discussion. Couple other just things that I think would be interesting to put in there, which is, in my mind, the staffing levels should remain about the same or reduced because of likely enrollment dropping. Board guidance, I would think for staffing levels would be to continue to drive more in-classroom staff versus non-student facing staff or admin. So we want to drive more folks who are... So we want to drive more folks who are with students. And when we make staffing decisions, we should target that. The, the next one is a little bit more interesting, which is, I think we should include or at least present as an option, two additional middle school math teachers, so one for each middle school, to boost in-class teachers for one middle school grade. So we have something where sixth grade, they get dual literacy, they get two hours of literacy. We can't expand the day, but we have problems with math. So let's try shrinking the class sizes for one of the grades and see if we can make an improvement there. And let's target this for a year to try to do that. So I, I think that would be something, that would be interesting to look at to try to attack our math issue, and then track the results with data. So I'll pause there if there's any discussion about that at the board.
Yeah, I don't disagree, again, because those middle schools operate in the houses and stuff, that, frankly, I have no idea.
I think that, in, in looking at that, I think one of the things that we can go back and look at is, if I'm inferring correctly, we, we know math as a concern, and we definitely know that we have some things we need to look at with our middle school. We've got some scheduling components, we have a team looking at that right now, is that as a team, we can go back and look at what might be some of these additional resources that we can do, trying it on a smaller scale to see, is it working? What's that return on investment? Because then that would help us to know, do we expand that to other grades in the future? If not, what else can we try? We have currently, but because of some, you know, staffing leads or whatnot, we had had, or positions that were filled before, we had to shift this around with a targeted math inner, math teacher to be able to pull students per quarter, looking at those math deficits and giving them that extra time. So we'll, we'll go ahead and look at, hey, what might that look like for math as a target? Because we know that's a strategic plan area we need to hit.
I guess that was what I was trying to flesh out.
Yeah.
When we say we want a math, that we talk about just overall, we trying to make sure the ones who are struggling are getting more attention, or are we trying to raise the bar on our, even our high performing?
In, in, I guess the way, if we picked seventh grade, and you doubled the number of math teachers, or you added a math teacher, it would bring down the classrooms, so you would need an extra classroom for each. I think both middle schools can afford that. I think they have room for that.
That's what I was asking, because of the way.
I know Marlow does.
The way those sections are, those houses are, be trying to accommodate that additional.
Well, potentially, we'd have to look at that. We'd have to go, it might not be in that pod, but there is a classroom where they would be, but there's a classroom at any given time, if, if the class is down in PE, a classroom would be available. We would have to look at if we went to do something like that, just like the high school, a class, a teacher might have to move periods for when that would be at. So if we were to say it would be housed in that pod, no, not at Hyman, but if we needed to look at that piece of it. I think one of the things that I want, would want our team to look at is where, what does the data say about which are our students who are struggling? Where are those things that can help improve, maybe, maybe a part of that, and I, I don't know, maybe a part of that is, we've got our students who are, that are at that exceeding, but they're, they're not growing. You know, is that an area we need to target? But I think we need to look at the data, what the grades are, and then utilize, hey, what's our resources? How do we do, what's the biggest bang for the buck at that grade level, or what does that look like? I know your team has talked a lot about that in general, so there may be some ideas that you have there and that we would absolutely bring forward, you know, in, in April when we talk about that budget to say, hey, here's what we think we could do to, you know, to tackle that. And so what I'm hearing is, hey, we would like to see some additional resources in that math area, and then we could kind of tackle what that might look like.
And I, I think it would help pretty much all students in math. I guess my personal belief is that middle school is one of the areas where you kind of, you lose some in math.
Sure.
And, I mean, some of the kids who are already advanced, who are two years ahead, they're already getting some more advanced things, so maybe it allows teachers more time to help kids who are struggling. And again, I think we just need to try to do something, and as a board, I think we should put some money into that.
Well, and I was gonna say, how about just the general concept from board sayings? You know, and maybe it's not just math, maybe, but anything educational wise, classroom wise, that, that don't feel constrained by our budget, okay? If you can come up with something, it's gonna cost more money that you think can have a significant impact to our kids' educational experience, to enhance it, you should not be afraid to bring that forward.
I agree.
And let, allow the board to decide. We, we might decide, okay, with deficit spending for a couple of years, to see how some dedicated resources, you know, work out. So, and it, it just would, would just tell you, give you the general thought of free your mind of, we got budgetary constraints when it comes to education. Just think through what you might present if you didn't have budgetary constraints. Think through it, and then, like you said, you collaborate with, you know, yourselves and the board to see what, what we place value on and what we.
And tie to our strategic plan.
It says a long-term outgoing board member.
So spend all the money. Yeah.
Yes.
Right, what a joy.
We will do that, and we will make sure that they are going back to what's gonna have the biggest impact on the students and tie to our strategic plan and student. Yeah.
And I'm just saying this, in the same framework, I'll go back to when we had the capital development money, and we were rethinking that high school and the, and the items we were looking at. And I can remember telling the administration, don't, don't, don't feel constrained by exactly that, just think through every single thing that might enhance that, and then we'll figure, we'll figure out a way whether it works or not, okay, financially. And so, don't, my outgoing thought's gonna be, don't ever constrain yourself with, okay, I gotta work within this little tight window of budget. I mean, come up with the best ideas, and, and, you know, everybody can figure out how to, figure out how to make it work, and how to prioritize whether that's worthwhile going after or not.
Yeah. We're on the same page with what this is. In the curriculum meetings, we always ended with, you know, just tell us what you need to make it better, right? And, and we're serious about that, because we can do things.
Well, and I think, I think too, as we're, as you're talking to this strategic plan, it's not just improving those skills, like math is obviously a skill, but I would like to see something being considered too on that portrait of a graduate, which, which we're trying to do. And like really look at what type of things do we need to budget for that aren't contemplated right now? You know, we've had a lot of feedback from the community that people want to go into the labor business. They, I've had a lot of people say, why, we have a better auto shop. Like, you know, a lot of it is a space constraint, some of it is a budgetary constraint, some of it is a staffing constraint. So I think trying to your, to that strategic plan initiative, let's not constrain ourselves with that. Let's think about how we approach that as well.
Thank you.
So, again, I think good discussion. Any other comments about that?
Yeah. Piggyback off of yours, because I, I also look at this as looking at what's upstream, because eventually those kiddos are gonna get to middle school. So is it, are there skills that we need to be building in the younger grades to have them better prepared for middle school? That, that way, we're not addressing just that one year or two years as they occur. We're looking at it from a bigger picture perspective of how do we get our students better prepared to enter middle school?
And I'm like you asked, I keep reminding hearing, Mr. Bivens, saying, if you look at our data, our elementary scores are getting better, so I, that's reaffirming, that's reassuring, at least, as what's going to come up, but our middle school scores do have a dip that just has not taken back out. And so what I'm hearing is we need to tackle the issue, but also don't forget the proactivity of making sure we're not gonna continue it.
Yep.
And so I'm confident that the plans they haven't placed are doing that. We need to figure out how to tackle the issue of what we're seeing right now in the best way. And we've had a middle school committee meeting for the last year and a half, talking about the schedule. It's difficult to figure out what to move, what minutes to go, because there's only a finite amount of time. And then the question becomes, is time most important, or is it the constant number of students in a classroom? What I hear you saying, Mr. Bivens, is we want to, you know, sort of hypothesis of, is it the number of students in a classroom versus time, maybe? Or we can tackle it one way, so we could unravel that a little bit.
If you can take a class at 26 middle schoolers, who, half of them probably don't even want to be in a math class.
Right.
And you can bring that down to 19 in that classroom, you actually have more time with the teachers to work with them and look at that. That's the, that's the concept. Again, I think you try it, you see if the data works, and see if it works out. I think that's, that's the intent behind this, is we know we have an issue on the math, let's try something.
Thanks.
And we don't have to change curriculum, we don't have to do anything, we just need to find a room, in Hyman specifically.
It won't be in the pot, it'll be somewhere. Yep. Another piece, Mr. Troy brought up, kind of the, coming from elementary all the way through. And when we look at, and this is in any area, but, you know, most specifically, when we, we've got a literacy plan, and we just presented a couple of months ago, the math plan, that through all of our meetings, Mr. Almeyer and myself have been meeting with each of the cabinet members, and then they've been working with their teams to look at, what are those resources to kind of budget ahead, not a, okay, last year we had this, so we're just gonna roll that up? What is it that we need for professional development, resources to tackle those things? What do we need to, to hit the, the mark on what our plan has? And then, Mrs. Wiley, as you talked about, you know, some of those future things that we want to be able to roll out. So we've got a lot of moving parts on those pieces, so that as we work with Mr. Almeyer to say, hey, here are the goals we need to hit, how do we make it work in here? But the, you know, this discussion and priorities of, what are some of the things that you'd like to see? And they are tying into that strategic plan and those priorities, and we'll, you know, be continuing that conversation, so that as budget draft one comes, we look at that, we discuss. Sometimes we might have to go back to the drawing board and then prioritize, because there will be decisions we've got to make, but at least we're having those discussions. Departments, they're having them with the buildings, and then we're having those as a cabinet and as board. So appreciate some of these conversations here.
It might be useful too, for us to look at, we, the administrative team here at the district office has a huge amount of responsibility on just doing their day-to-day technical work, but then on top of it, we have a lot of projects that we end up putting out. Like, we're talking here about, you know, rolling out a new ERP system. Curriculum has a huge amount of projects that they do. It might be worthwhile for us to look, and I, and I'm not saying that I want to increase district office staff, but, you know, we, we potentially need to look in, how do we move salary around to maybe develop somebody that would be kind of a project management person, to maybe take some of those responsibilities off, so that people are able to do the jobs that they need to do, without having to manage all of these projects between district office and administrators down at the school building? I, I'd just like to be able to see what that would look like, and what the cost would necessarily be like, and if it would provide any value to our district office staff, and then also administrators at the school. Just to have somebody that has a fresh eye, that isn't so close to the information. I look at like Ms. Spears and what she's been able to do in her role, and how it's taken some of the onus off of Dr. McCrindle, having that type of a role. And I'm not talking about replicating it on the Spears, but somebody that would be able to understand that information and be able to roll things out a little bit more seamlessly to everybody.
All right. I had a couple others, which was probably not as interesting as, as the last one. So follow the capital building maintenance plan outlined in our facilities plan if you've got a great plan. Let's, let's make sure the budget continues and follows it, and look for opportunity to bring things forward where it makes sense. Closely examine the needs of transportation, specifically bus purchases, as we look at the enrollment, where it's going. Let's make sure, and I know we have in the past few years, scrutinize this a bit, but let's, are we buying the right number of buses for really the number of students? And I would even go as far as, we maintain our buses pretty well, we do different things, can they survive 12 years versus 10 years? That, that kind of stuff. I know that it's usually not the engine that's the problem, it's usually the kids ripping apart the, the bus seats, but, you know, something like that, if there's a way to extend the capital purchase there. So this is more for commentary, maybe from administration in the budget about what ifs. So looking forward, there's always a five-year plan that's in there, so I think we typically assume enrollment is stable. I'd like some commentary of what happens if the, over the next five years, enrollment goes up by 5%? Or if it goes down by 5%? What is that kind of impact? Where do we look at it? Again, and trying to be fair of, it could go either way. We don't really know on that, but just, I'm just looking for some commentary in the budget of what we would think directionally that might happen. And then lastly, one of the things that's in the budget is this five-year extension, creating an easy kind of overall district financials for the five-year. I, I think the educational fund was listed out, and, and some folks were out there talking about how it's got a $14 million deficit, but when you add up all the things in there, there's surpluses in other areas, so it's a lot smaller than what's actually being outlined in that. So I think being able to bring that forward, to make it clear to anybody looking at the budget, what it is. So those are the kind of things I was thinking, so on this, any other comments or ideas for the, the budget input that we'd like to give to the administration?
I wanted to suggest, I know this has been out there a lot with a lot of chatter on this, but as far as not giving Chromebooks out till third grade, but giving Red书 from K through 2. I know that's maybe not in the near future, but I know, I know. I just would love to see, you know, the little not have a computer in front of their face all the time, and.
Well, one of the things that we have worked with in, in looking at, we're starting with kids around, about how, what is that balance, right? Because technology is part of our world, but how do we balance that with other hands-on experiences? What are they ready for? All of those things. And so I know that it's been shared with staff and, and all of that, it'll be coming out, we are looking at kind of classroom sets of things that can be there, and to be utilized when appropriate, and, and all of that. So we're, we're starting to look at those things, and again, what are the, all of the impacts with that? Because we know we have to have them ready to utilize, they, they know how to do it, there are parts that are important, but then what does that look like at each grade level? And so definitely, our Allen I team is, is all over looking at what does that look like right now? So I.
And I'm appreciating all those. Sure, this is a lot of Chromebooks, sure.
So I've observed this, because I'm doing something in schools now. It's not just the kids at the younger grades, it's the overall treatment of the devices.
Sure.
Kids walk around with them wide open and hold them by the flash, by screen, and then drop them and think, this is funny. So it's, it's about teaching.
We don't see that here.
I'm not, I'm not picking on anybody in particular, but, but it's just kids, because they don't understand the cost of these items, or the background in support of these devices. So they, they treat them, you know, however they choose. And, and they drop them on the floor, and they, like, like you said, they think it's funny. So part of that is the education process as well, to respect your devices, but you know, like, go so far with those, that kind of information for, for kids of that age. So I think it, it would be interesting to take a look at that as this evolves as well.
Okay, one final last comment, which is, we've seen the Special Olympics from two years ago grow from zero to, I think, seven in the, in the track and field, to 22, plus basketball, it's across all the districts. I, I guess I would want to make sure, as we're growing in this, we need to make sure that the budget supports the growth, so that any kid who wants to be there some Special Olympics, or any of these sort of special needs activities can be a part of it. So, I know that hasn't been an issue so far, but we should keep growing it.
Keep it a priority, yeah.
So, any other comments, questions about that? All right, with that, we will, we've given you inputs to the budget. Mark's got lots of work to do.
We all do. But it's your memo, right? Is that Dr. Zara's comment? Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, it's your memo. So, all right, so we'll move to number 13, public comment, any additional public comments? Scanning the crowd, nobody's jumping up. So 14, I'll make a motion to move into closed session at 8 o'clock. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. So a roll call, please.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Quirano?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
All right, with that, we'll move downstairs. Thank you.
Yeah, it's the recording here. So we will resume the committee of the whole at 9:25 PM. Can I have a roll call please?
Mr. Craddy. Mr. Benjamin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quanziano.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Lilly.
Here.
All right, with that, we're all here. So moving to number 16, adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:20, 9:26 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
It is the Det Kongregis Tietz, or the National Opera House in Copenhagen, Denmark.
Oh.
Okay, Europe.
All right.
There you go.
Look at that. Thanks for that.
I can't wait.
How y'all doing everybody? See you next week.
See you.
He didn't, we didn't check him in. He was just out.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, going.
And then somebody started leaving, so I can run over there and you.
Wow, your heli lift was the limit.
Okay.
This was the, the open, the, both had to be long ones.
Yeah, it was.
The skyward was a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I didn't know.
I don't have anything to sign, right?
I wasn't sure how they.
The certificate went after you.
I will find that out now.
I think so.
To do a message, because last time when I was there, the panel was at a certain time.
What did you say, 10:45?
The certificate said, uh, that were hard copies.
Which is great.